I missed you.
You should be pledged up. I had another one.
Thank God you all set up this morning. You're welcome.
Look at my face, so much.
Rex, you got the first. And Tom, whatever said? Well, it's when we get to.
There you go.
Will they go ahead and start her?
No, no, no. This one hurt me.
And don't go to a physical therapist. Took me six years to get one. Get the right doctor. He knows how to write it. So, did you have a road thing in Steel House Lane or something like that? I don't know where that was on that list. Did you get that on there?
I haven't even looked at it yet, Rex.
I wrote it down here so we got to make sure that we get it on one of the lists that it was supposed to be. It's a six-year road plan.
Gentlemen, I entertain a motion to us return from closed session to open session, please.
Make a motion to go into open session?
Second. Have a motion and a second for us to return from closed session back into open session. Start with the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Let's all rise for the pledge and invocation, please. Heavenly Father, we take this opportunity to thank you for this day that you provided for us. We thank you for this group that has gathered in this building to go over the county business and make decisions, help us make the decisions that are appropriate for everyone. We ask that you watch overs, protect us, lead us, and guide us, and Jesus say we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you all for being out tonight. A few people here participate, I hope, and hope everything goes well tonight. Seeking a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
I have a motion for the approval of the agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second, but Mr. Webb, start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Yes, sir. I'm sorry about that. It's not on my note and I didn't see it. I'm sorry. Back up and we'll take a certification for closed session. We'll start that with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Do I have to have a motion for a certification?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we certify executive session, that we only spoke about the things that we entered session for.
I have a motion by Mr. Martin that we certify closed session, that we only spoke of what we spoke, we're supposed to.
Second.
Have a second, but now we'll start the voting again with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And I'm sorry about that confusion, folks. Go back to a motion to accept our consent agenda. Sections A, B, C, and just section D is a treasurer's reportance for information only, subject to the audit.
I shall move.
I have a motion by Mr. Hill. I need a second. By Mr. Littrell. Start voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we amend the agenda to include unsightly trash, land adjacent to property owners that we could discuss a little of that.
Does anyone oppose to that?
I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda to include unsightly trash. Start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
You, Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And I wrote that down to come after the six-year road plan, if that's okay with you all. Now we'll go back to the consent agenda, which we've had in the second, I mean, a motion and a second on, and we'll start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The next item on our agenda is community appointments.
We need to address the top two. One of your dads.
The two IDA ones?
Yeah.
Are those folks willing to continue to serve? If they are willing to continue to serve?
I'm going to say that they are because they have continued serving.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve those two positions at IDA.
I have a motion that we accept Mr. Larry Edwards and Mr. Andy Jackson to continue serving on IDA. Do I have a second?
Second. Excuse me.
Have a second. Start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. The VIAA, the A Corridor, Mount Rogers Development Partnership, we need to reappoint Mr. Truitt. Are you willing to accept that? Have a motion from Mr. Hill to have a second?
Second.
Second, and Dr. Littrell. Start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The Planning Commission, I know Ronald's not here tonight, or is Beverly Tipton and Naaman willing to take again? Need a motion to accept those two nominations, please?
I'll make that motion.
I need a second, please.
A second motion.
Start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Public Service Authority. Is Mr. Light willing to take again, or you want to?
No, he doesn't want to take it again. And I've been talking to different people that's not interested in it.
Okay.
So, I spoke with Mr. Hill here and he said he's willing to serve on it for me. So, I'd like to place Rex Hill in nomination for that.
We have a nomination of Rex Hill to serve on the Public Service Authority. Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Second by Mr. McCraw. We'll start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Go ahead. I have no objection to Mr. Hill serving, but typically this is from the districts in which the supervisor's in.
Okay.
I'll just throw that out.
Okay. Start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Stane.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
I will sleep better than I knowing Rex is on her, yes.
And I vote yes. Next list is Social Services, and that's Joyce Bun. I believe that's also in your district, isn't it?
I have no idea.
Okay, I think it is, and I know that she can't serve again because she's going to serve two terms, so we'll have to find someone else to serve on that. Solid Waste Authority, Benny Robinson, is he?
He is not willing to serve.
Not willing to serve any longer, okay. So, we need to find someone to replace him with.
It's like we just throw it out. I think we should put a board member on there. We don't have a, we used to have a board member on there. I don't worry anybody's willing to serve.
Okay. You'd be willing to do it, both?
Yeah.
And not just them, but also, I mean, my friends on there.
Yeah. So, is anyone else, any interest in serving on the Solid Waste Authority? If not, Mr. Martin is willing to?
I'll make a motion, we appoint Bob Martin.
I have a motion to place Mr. Martin on the Solid Waste Authority. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second. Start the voting with, any other discussion? I'll start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Rex Hill is up for the Crossroads Institute. Are you willing to serve again?
I'll do it.
I need a motion to accept Rex Hill as a member of the Crossroads Institute.
I make the motion.
I have a motion by Mr. McCraw.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Webb. Any other discussion? Start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Stane.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The next one is the Withfield Community College, and I understand that Dick Dalton no longer wants the position.
He's moving.
Moving away, okay. And Angie Jackson is willing to take the position. Is that correct, Angie? She come highly recommended by Miss Babe Vas, so.
That's a good recommendation.
I don't know if it's a district. Do I have a motion to?
I'll make that motion that we nominate Angie Jackson to Withfield Community College Board.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Any other discussion? Start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Angie, thank you for agreeing to serve on the Withfield Community College Board. The next item is going to be to adopt and appropriate the fiscal year 19 county budget and 2018 tax rates.
Is that me?
That you?
I make a motion to approve and appropriate the fiscal year 2019 Carroll County general operating total expenditures of forty-two million, five hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six. The general fund and eight thousand dollars for law library fund and appropriate these amounts presented by department. When including the school budget in the amount of forty-three million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars, the total fiscal year 2018 county general operating and law library fund budgets are eighty-five million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Have a second, but Mr. Martin, any other discussion? Start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. I think that there's a, go ahead, yeah. Sorry, Don.
He wrote the date for it.
He done the first one. Number two is you.
I move to adopt the calendar 2018 tax rates as advertised and heard at our public hearing on April the 23rd, 2018. The adopted rates for the calendar year 2018 tax year are as follows. The real estate is sixty-nine and a half cents for a hundred dollars assessed valuation. Personal property is a dollar ninety-five for a hundred dollars assessed valuation. Merchant's capital is sixty-nine cents for a hundred dollars, a one-hundred percent assessed valuation. And machinery and tools is a dollar seventy-five cents for a hundred dollars assessed valuation based on depreciation factors. And you want to read the depreciation factors?
It's really neat to read those or list it. I have a motion to accept tax rates as advertised. I'd like to also add that that's a no increase this year. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second, but Mr. Hill. Any other discussion? Start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. The next item is to adopt and appropriate the fiscal year 19 school budget. Entertain a motion to accept the budget, appropriate it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve and appropriate for fiscal year 2019 Carroll County Public School operating budget in the amount of forty-three million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars.
I have a motion by Mr. Martin to approve and appropriate the school budget.
You gained a hundred thousand dollars, Tammy.
Second.
Skip me, you gained.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any other discussion? Start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and appropriate the fiscal year 2019 school debt service budget in the amount of four million, six hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars.
I have a motion by Dr. Littrell to approve and appropriate this debt, school debt service. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second. Any other discussion? Start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
I have made an assumption I did that right because my note here says 2109.
It does say 2109. That's another time though, I guess.
What's a couple of million among friends?
The date, the fiscal year date is wrong on that debt service. It's got 2109. I need a motion to approve and appropriate the fiscal year food services budget.
Food services, excuse me. I move to approve and appropriate the fiscal year 2019 food service budget in the amount of two million, nine hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars.
I have a motion for the approval and appropriation of the food service budget. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Have a second. Start the voting with you. Any other discussion, I'm sorry. Start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Ah, yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The next one is to approve and appropriate the 2019 school textbook fund.
I make a move to approve and appropriate the fiscal year 2019 school textbook fund in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars.
I have a motion by Mr. McCraw to approve and appropriate the school textbook fund. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Have any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
For the folks that are here, we didn't walk in the door and come up with these numbers. This thing has been going on for months and developing these numbers with the school board and our different departments, so I wish it was that we could walk in the door and just say this or that, but it's a long-drawn-out process.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We'll start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, gentlemen. Yes, sir.
I need to make a declaration.
Okay.
Okay. Today's discussion involves the county budget, and this discussion may include funding for the Carroll County schools. As many as you know, I work at times for the Carroll County schools. The proposed funding would affect the entire school system and not just me individually. And together, we constitute a group of three or more individuals who are similarly employed by the schools and similarly affected by the decisions. Therefore, the exception to the Virginia State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act, Virginia Code Section 2.2-3112B1 applies to this situation, and I am able to participate and discuss fairly, objectively, in the public's interest.
Thank you, sir. The next item on our agenda is the six-year road plan. And I think we just need to get a motion and take a vote on approving the six-year road plan. Does anyone have any questions?
Do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
A couple of roads that I asked last month to be put on the plan didn't get put on.
Okay.
So, I don't know, I'm like saying I'm new at this game, so I don't know.
We've actually come up, sitting here earlier, and come up with several that need to be added to it. What else, what did you have, Joe?
One of them was Steel House Road.
Okay.
And I can't remember, I got it at home. I didn't bring it with me tonight. There's another road that a gentleman.
Do you know where it's at?
Can't remember.
Should be. Also got several others that we come up with.
Merrimack?
Merrimack.
Merrimack's on the list.
Yeah, it's on here, it is.
Right, Steel House wasn't on the list, and I thought there was a third one that I gave you all. Okay.
We need to add Broadway Lane, Water Plant Road. Are they on there?
Yeah, Water Plant, Sanic, and Loafres Rest is on them.
Harrison Ridge, Baltimore Road, and Grace Lane. Was that the other?
That was one we thought we would discuss.
Joe Neal, wouldn't Keno Road a song here? Wouldn't, what are you thinking about?
No, sir. No, that one's been on here.
And the other one is Mount Carroll Road. We'd like to have it added.
Can we play John Doe Road? When he comes up with it next month? Could we do that?
I mean, we. I think that's fine with me. I mean, as long as.
Okay, all right. I'll get you that information.
I need to get a motion on accepting the second, the six-year road plan.
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion for Mr. Hill to accept the six-year road plan. Do I have a second?
I second it.
We have any other discussion? Baltimore? Baltimore Road.
It's a gravel section. Dr. Littrell?
It's in Pipers Gaff. Baltimore Road's in Pipers Gaff.
It's right along that, it's, I can't remember if it's.
Any other discussion? Start the voting with you. Do we get a second?
Yes.
Start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The next item we had was the unsightly trash. Mr. Martin asked to add to the agenda, and I'll let you have the floor.
All right, thank you. I've received several calls, and as the board knows, we really started working on an unsightly, almost illegal trash dump in the county last year, and it was a matter of going to court and so forth. And it's come to my attention, and I knew about two of them, that I know we've got one in Pine Creek and on Airport Road, and there's one on Route 58 near Benton Hill Road, on the same side there. The, and these things keep popping up, and I don't think it's going to go away. We got pretty good results with county administrator and legal going after this particular individual on the first unsightly deal we had going over toward Galax. And I'd just like to see us pursue similar kind of action. We've got several other situations, and they're not going to go away. And the, I'd just, I'd like to see us put our head together. I'm not ready to vote for zoning countywide, but hopefully there's something that we can do because it's just not right for people to work hard, build a nice home, and make it look nice, and then so-and-so throws in his whatever site right down the main street or on the Airport Road. Off the top of your head, you have a suggestion that we could start getting involved in?
Yes, the suggestion would be to identify the sites and put some kind of priority on them. And then, I'd be happy to take them and work with legal counsel. But what we would need to do is take photographs. We would need to identify characteristics of each site that are potentially either hazardous or illegal. And probably our approach to each site would be different depending on what's there. And we'll be able to do more about some sites than about others depending on what's there.
There are health department laws and regulations. There are. There are health department laws and regulations. There are, we have rules and regulations pertaining to mobile homes, is my understanding, and probably some other things that will come into play, uh-
Yeah, I mean, you know, particularly things that are helping, you know, draw sewage and turbin, uh, you know, certain kinds of refuse constitutes an illegal though. It just depends on what it is. Uh, we're just gonna have to look at it, change by change.
And we want to give notice to the, the property owners who, uh, who may own these sites. Some of them might know that they're, might not know that they're in violation of the county's ordinances, so as Steve said, the first thing to do is identify those sites and assess what's actually there, and then give notice to, to the property owners and any occupants that they're in violation of ordinances.
I think three or more members on the board are probably, and if you take the first one, it's, it tosses you into it, Dr. Littrell. And, uh, the, how many people here are here because of unsightly laws? Okay.
Well, since that's the fact, case, I think, uh, we'll just move on to citizens' time and, uh-
And please come out and speak. It's not anything, uh, we removed a snake den that was in that speaking place.
I'm sorry, Curly, I have a hard time calling you Leonard, but you're, you're the one that's on here, so.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, the board. Uh, my name is Leonard Sifford. I live on the Airport Road. Uh, been throughout the county for many years. Uh, we've lived here, I guess, since back in, what, 60s? All her life. Amen. Uh, and we have got an issue, and it's not just on Airport Road. It's over Hornet County. And I'm not just, and I can tell you who it's with. Uh, it's, uh, Brother, uh, Behrman, Emery Behrman.
I've heard that name before, I think.
Uh, okay. Love him as a brother, but he's not holding up his responsibility of, uh, uh, cleaning up around here, and really, really appreciate what, uh, has come before me tonight.
Spring clean up.
This has brought to me tonight. Really appreciate that. Uh, thank you. Free. All you gotta do is free. Take it to the dump. Don't leave it in the yard and, and expose stuff that shouldn't be there. Now, this young man, and I know this to be a fact, has bought a mobile home. Three or four of them is gonna put them on one lot. And that lot is, it serves one household. He's bought three or four trailers and put them in there. Well, that wasn't bad enough, okay? He owned a, a, a mobile home sitting out here on 52, one of, it's here from, uh, acre store, uh, site, Sunnyside Stores, that's why I've always heard it called. And guess where it's at now? It's over here on the lot. I don't want the government or the state had them to move it off there with some of the trailers, and he's moved in. And not only that one, I think it's a place on out the end of the Airport Road. And the reason I like to see the Airport, we have a lot of people that come in here. You know, gets off the planes, "Boy, sure is a nice place here." Carroll County's a nice place. That's what I want to keep. That's what I'm after. To see Carroll County stay a nice place. Or somebody driving through, I'm out of town, coming in there, "Well, we'd like to live in Branson, children here. This is a beautiful, beautiful area." So children, I'm asking y'all tonight to check in on these things. It's on Airport Road and not just Airport Road. Let's get them all, 'cause, hey, it's free. Just, just let them get up, dump a car, let them get up off there. Well, and I'll, I'll leave that one there, and do something about it. 'Cause you take, uh, the homeowners, it's built, as Brother Martin said, nice homes. Just like y'all, I'm, I'm sure and I hope you have, got nice homes, and you don't want to see a dump coming, and the brother sitting back there with me is right directing his. If we need to take pictures, we'll be glad to take pictures and bring them to the board.
And that's one of the prime areas we hope in future have industrial growth and-
Yes. Yes, that's, that's what we have to, we're after, to bring these people in here. We need them. Y'all know that now. I think we're down on, uh, the schools now, not as many as this year enrolled in Carroll County. Uh, my son graduated here, my daughter graduated here, and I want to see my grandchildren that's moved back from Texas, graduate from here if it's possible. Robbie knows it.
Yep.
Isaac, brothers knows my brothers and sisters, and this is one I'm after. Children, do everything we can. Okay?
I appreciate it. Curly, I really do. And if you'll give the locations to some of the staff, let them know, that way we can get started on this process.
Okay, and to the members of the boards, uh, we have others that was not able to make it. Junior Bass had, uh, full bypasses, uh, Richard in Carroll and Honeycutt was on the way out of town tonight and won't be back till next week. We've got some petitions signed up, and we'll give it to the board.
Okay. Sounds like he may, this person may be in violation of-
Definitely.
Of health department. I don't, I don't know how big a lot that is, but, uh, their limits, what you can put on there.
Well, the, the young man that lived there, passed away, and, uh, just him and his wife lived there, and they had a double wide. And bless his heart, he got down with, I think it was kidney troubles. And the size of that lot is, uh, point nine-five-four-oh acres. Very small lot. But the young man was living there, we'll get back to him, uh, was even unable to mow his yard. So tell you how our, our neighborhood works. Two of us went for two years, went over and mowed his yard, and never charged him a dime. Why? It's because we want our neighborhood to look good, and we want to help our brothers when they're in need. That's what this thing is, is all about. Is helping the brother in need. And I, and I think tonight, and I'm asking for y'all's help, and we'd be glad to give you the pictures and show you what this young man is doing. And, and not, not just on Airport Road, it's, it's several places in Carroll County. He's doing this too. And I think we need to get it cleaned up, and everybody work together with it. Amen?
Amen.
I agree with you totally. And I'm new at this, I'm new at this supervisor's thing, but I'm, I'm looking kinda, is there some way the county can come up with an ordinance about these sites? And, and I know you said that you had to get legal confrontation on one that they're working on right now. Uh, and I'm just wondering, would it be best if we had to go legal counsel? If we have to go legally, uh, petitions of neighbors that have complaints, and, and you know, I've always heard numbers, numbers speak louder.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
But I would, I would like to see the county come up with an ordinance, not, not saying zoning, not saying zoning, 'cause I know that's a, they're a dirty word in Carroll County. But there is a, a lot of unsightly places in Carroll County that without zoning, we can't touch them, right? Without some kind of an ordinance or how, what would be the process of going through that the county could adopt an ordinance for these sites?
They already pretty much got one. Comprehension Plan covers a lot of that.
Planning, Planning Commission covers some of it. Some of the violations may be, they're too close to the edge of the property line. They have to get a building permit. They gotta get a, if they move a trailer in, if it's just a storage trailer, they have to have a permit. You know, there's some of the things that, uh, that may be required. I talked to Carolyn before the meeting, when she was leaving, she talked to me and gave me a little bit of info. Plus, I drive by there. I thought it was just a temporary thing, that they were just parking them there and moving them somewhere else, but evidently that's not the case.
That's not the case.
So, uh, then we might want to get Ronald to take a look at it as well.
Steve?
I can take a look and see if there are any additional, um, provisions that we could adopt. I mean, the county does have some ordinances in place to, um, prohibit operating a private dump, basically maintaining public nuisance.
Right.
Some of this is a matter of just communication. When the, when the public comes and reports that there are issues, then we can, we can give that required notice to the property owner, and if necessary, take them to court and start that process. But a lot of it's just hearing about what, what are the issues that are out there.
Right.
But I'm happy to look if there's some additional strength that we can put in our ordinance without, um, you know, without one.
Right, and, and not just, not just to clean up what's out there now to, to prevent new ones from coming in.
Yes, later, later down.
You know, if the county had some kind of an ordinance that had, had something in it, then we can stop it quick, you know, without having to go through all this.
And later down in years to come.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know, most of y'all know, I've been with the B and B Tire for right fifty years. God has blessed me to have a good job here and to raise my family, and I don't want to see Carroll County still rot.
Yeah.
And we can, if we get together and put it all together. Takes time. I know about time. And, and I'm all, I'm all for doing anything that we can to do to help the board.
It, it's not about-
It's not-
Your objection's not about mobile homes, but you could have a brand-new million-dollar house that was an eyesore if you put, if you just put the wrong junk in the yard and so forth, and, and that's what your objection to do. I'm not saying these are million-dollar homes in there, but, uh-
Right. And also, right beside the, the place where we, all this stuff is at, we got a new family coming in. It went in and, and, and just took and done away the whole inside of the house, and they're remodeling that house. I talked to him tonight. He said, "Leonard, I'd really hate to go ahead and go through the process of, of doing the home now if they're gonna, not gonna do anything about this here." We, we, you know, that's discouraging people. We don't want to discourage people. We want to make them feel home. This is home, Carroll County.
I agree with you a hundred percent. I, I think you, you'll get a hundred percent agreement from everyone on this board. It needs to be addressed. It needs to be taken care of, and, uh, I think we got a process and got a start on it, and we'll keep, try to get it took care of for you.
I'll tell you one other story, and I'll sit down, and then I'll help you if you can come out. Be glad to. I'm right over there. And Airport Road should turn into sixteen open high development. Now, I, I love our little place over there, and to make it, when it come out, we got the woods right in front of it. The old telephone post, and it was branches and stuff growing up. That's what I went down. I went up to part of the road, I went in and I started mowing that with my hand, push mower, all the way down past my house. So when we coming out of the development, you see a pretty tree back there.
It's called pride of ownership.
Taking pride in the county and taking pride of what we have, that's right.
And went over and even planted some flowers, so when people come down, they can see something pretty. And, and this place here is not very pretty, that we're talking about. Okay, I better sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leonard.
I appreciate y'all too.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll work with you. We'll work with you.
I'd be glad to ride over there and tour if we're gonna.
And I'm, I'm sort of sitting down, trying to put down some healthy issues, but most time I'm in the home, in the shop, a lot of chairs, if you're there, I feel like, we'd be glad to do, we'd be glad to do anything that we can help, that we can help do to, to take care of. Well, I say, not just that, but let's, let's work, let's, let's work on beauty in Carroll County. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that he was the only one that signed up. Is there anyone else would like to speak?
Fred Surratt just could launch you into a slot for governor next year.
I'll, I'll back him on everything you say.
Your wife told you what to say, didn't you?
I'll say something, Bobby.
All right, Betty.
He has these tr- trailers. He's got one trailer where the man that used to live there had a tree, a single wide. He has put a double wide, knocked together, parked the two parts near the end of it, and it doesn't pass but about this far to the highway. And I have been hoping and hoping that one, seventy-seven blocks up. And you know what happens to the Airport Road when seventy-seven blocks up? All the tractor trailers come down through our, through there. If one of them would just take the side.
I am hurt to the bone, the former kindergarten teacher's getting that. I can't believe it. It would help if probably if you crowded the other side of the road with some, uh, railroad ties or something, they got to come over a little bit, you know? Yes, I know. I've, I've been through there, I know.
I've been sorry for, uh, the people that walked down to Ogle Town, and they, that is what they, oh, well, she never opened it for me. It's terrible, to put it in plain words.
A few years ago, I was an assistant principal at Woodlawn, and Betty was a kindergarten teacher, and she never came to the office, so if you looked out the door and here she came with somebody by the ear leading them down the hallway, you, you call 911, and then you tore down the hall to see what the emergency was, 'cause you knew she was right on it. And it was bad, so I, you don't need to say anymore to me. I've been by that, by the way.
You know, there's lots of things, lots of times that we don't know these situations unless someone brings our, our, our attention, and, um, I really appreciate y'all being open about it and bringing it to our attention. Um, I need to get a, we have one other item of business that we left off, and I need to get a motion for us to establish the authority for us to be a part of the opioid litigation, um, process that's coming up. And I think you may have some information on that, Mr. Hill?
Make a motion that we retain Wagstaff and Clark mail, uh, for the opioid addiction lawsuit.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I second.
Do I have any other discussion?
Uh, I'd just like to point out that, uh, you know, you flip on the news and you see, what's a hundred and some deaths a day nationwide because of these high-powered synthetic drugs and so forth. And it's had a, it's had a tremendous effect on Carroll County, whether you know it or not. People get using this stuff, abusing it, distributing. Then they get caught, they go to regional jail. Sadly, some of them have children, so the Child Protective Services, Social Services gets involved on that end. And, uh, this past year at the regional jail, not solely because of that, but the expenses went up four hundred thousand dollars over budget, uh, and the, uh, CSA, and I don't know what that stands for, Confederate States of America or something, what is it?
Comprehensive Services.
All right, their budget went up a million one hundred thousand, and I'm just telling you, we just can't, the Carroll County doesn't have the resources that we can come up with a million dollars a year that's unplanned for and unbudgeted for, and that we have to scrape the, uh, floor to get, you know? So I'm strongly in favor of this.
Any other discussion? Not, we'll start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And, um, I'd like to get Mr. Durbin to give us an update- And I'd like to get Mr. Durbin to give us an update on delinquent taxes. I'm glad that the newspaper's here, and the people that are here tonight, so y'all can hear that we are working diligently on our delinquent taxes. And I think, Mr. Durbin can give us an update, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we received the delinquent tax list, we've done title searches on all the properties to identify the owners and any lien holders on the property, so we can send out the required notices. All of the notices were mailed out on between May 2nd and May 3rd. So, in the, I guess, six business days since it's been out, we've gotten a good response so far. We've had four accounts that have been paid in full. Forty properties are currently under a payment plan contract with payment arrangements. We have received sixteen thousand ninety-one dollars thirty-two cents to date. The money is positive in the bank, waiting for, just for the, the checks is clear. And with regard to properties that have been under a payment plan, that would represent one hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents in delinquent taxes that have reached, we paid at this point.
That's correct.
Moving forward, we sent those notices out, so June 2nd, June 3rd, the thirty days will have passed, and at that point, once that thirty-day notice period is passed, we will start proceeding to file suit.
Thank you, Steve, I appreciate it. Thanks for the hard work. Next item is our supervisors' time, and I guess we'll start with you, Mr. Webb, do you have anything?
Okay, yes, I do, thank you. First, I appreciate everybody coming up and letting the board be aware of what's going on in your community, as far as these unsightly things, and I hear you. And I, I'm like you, Mr. Leonard, I'd like to see the county get something in here that we can get them cleaned up, and we can prevent them from happening again countywide. And I would just like for other communities to be as brave as you people were, and come forward and let us know what's going on. And like I say, I'm new at this on the board, but it sounds like we do have a few things in place, as far as laws and rules and regulations, that we can take care of it, but I think we still need to work legally to try to get, get the whole county cleaned up. I, I really do, and I appreciate you guys being here, I do. I was very happy to be a part of a board that set the budget as everyone asked for it. We had a lot of help and support in, in making cuts where we needed them, and was very proud that we didn't have to raise taxes for this, this year. And that's something that this, this whole board has, has come together, and we really want to work for it. We, that's something we want to work for. We want to make sure every tax dollar's spent wisely, and we're not putting a tax burden on our citizens for stuff that doesn't need to be taken care of. Other than that, that's about all I've got, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCraw?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and support we have in the board meetings. And I'd like to thank everybody for working with us in the budget plan, and all the supervisors coming together each night and working on it, and different groups, Sheriff's Department, all the constitutional officers, they've been over backwards to work with us, and I appreciate it. And what Mr. Martin's talking about there, our jail expenses going up, it's not happening just to Carol County, but I talked to all the counties, they're having more arrests, more people sent to jail. Then some go to prison, they got the children to look after, and it don't come cheap. So, we need to be working, try to control our drug situation and how, that's the question. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. McCraw. Mr. Hill?
Yeah, I just want to thank staff for all the work with the budget, and putting up with my aggravating questions, and, and deep questions, and also the constitutionals for the, you know, their work on the delinquent taxes. And appreciate everybody coming out. Government can't operate without citizen input. We really appreciate you being here tonight. That's all I've got to say.
Dr. Littrell?
Well, I think we're all about saying the same thing, but I've been on the board for a while, and I think the leading question I've had of my constituents in Pipers Gap has been a litter problem. Second only to potholes and highway problems. We've addressed both of those tonight, and we have found that we do have limitations with our litter problems because of our not having zoning, but we do have some ability to take care of it, so I hope we can, to your satisfaction, take care of the problem. Not only yours, but all countywide. I too was pleased to see that the budget came through pretty much unscathed, and I didn't see any blood flowing anywhere, so that was a good thing. And I do appreciate the citizens and your input, because as it's been said, if we don't know what the problems you see are, we can't help fixing them.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Do we have a press release tonight?
No.
No, sir. Okay, good then. The, I finally found the correct email I've been hunting for for an hour, is last meeting, Melissa Dill from the Free Clinic Board, and which is made up by Carol Grayson and Galax, were asking for a member to represent Carol County, and if I'm going to do that, I'd like for the board to officially appoint me to it, and that I'd have a little bit more clout with them, I think. It's the Free Clinic Board.
Twin County Free Clinic, they come in and... Yeah, and we didn't have anyone that served on the board, and...
They wanted somebody.
They wanted someone, and he said he'd do it, so...
I've got a health degree, so...
Steve, do we need to take a motion?
Do they require us to appoint a member?
They have a member from Grayson and Galax on there, is my understanding, and if I'm a volunteer to serve, I...
Yeah, I think we can handle this offline, and I'll be happy to assist you, but I don't think it's required.
Why don't we find out for sure?
If you were volunteering your time, I think we can handle it off of whatever, but my damn time's pretty valuable. And I'm requesting to be appointed on there, so that, so that we can officially say that Carol County is represented. But I do understand your comment and so forth, but...
I make a resolution that we, we appoint you to the Free Clinic Board.
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
All right, just as a member, not to receive services, okay? All right, okay.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Have a second.
Any discussion?
I've left him in shock.
No, I was just thinking, like, maybe we ought to appoint you, like, to the New York Subway Commission.
Amtrak. Amtrak. Well...
Mr. Webb, we'll start the voting with you.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
You said Subway Commission? Check into it.
The Subway over there?
Oh, Subway Restaurant, okay. Now, that's all I have, and thank you. You know, people I deeply respect, and, and Fred and Betty, or Leonard, and everybody, I better not leave out anybody, you know, or people I deeply respect, and, and I know it's bad, but when you say it's bad, it's bad, you know? And we need to do something about it, and I think we will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I would just like to reiterate what everyone is saying. Thank, thank you for the citizens that have come out tonight and expressed their concerns, and for sharing them with us, and we can't do it without you. We can't do none of this without you all, and that's what's the important thing is. Thanks staff so much for the, for the budget that was presented, constitutionals for working with us the way they did, and for the time and efforts they've put forward to help with the budget and keep it flat this year, to where we didn't have to have a tax increase. I will say that this is the first year since I've been on the board that, out of three, that I voted yes for the budget. And, and it was because of tax increases. And I do appreciate staff, they've done, they've done a great job on it. I've got one other thing I want to share, just briefly, and it's just that it holds a, it holds a special place in my heart, and I'm going to share it, and it's, you know, and it, when you have a son or a family member that becomes and goes into law enforcement, you don't think about stuff daily, and it was brought to my attention that, you know, Carol County lost a deputy a year ago, on duty, line of duty accident. Made lots of things eye-opening, I guess, and I just wanted to share that this, this week is Peace Officers Memorial Week, and tomorrow's actually designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and I did a little bit of research because it was interesting to me, and I never had any idea of this, and that's why I want to share it. The idea of Peace Officers Memorial Day came into effect on October the first of nineteen sixty-one. When Congress asked the President to designate May fifteenth to honor law enforcement officers, President John F. Kennedy signed the bill into law on October first, nineteen sixty-two. Each year since then, the President of the United States proclaims May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week of each year during May fifteenth occurs, becomes Police Officers Memorial Week. According to the Legal Information Institute, the President is requested to issue a proclamation to designate May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day, to direct government officials to display the United States flag at half-staff on all government buildings, and to invite state and local governments and the people to observe the day with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Governor Northam signed a proclamation on the thirteenth designating it, or he signed it last Thursday, designating this week in Virginia also. Like I said, I did a little more research, and so far this year, there's been fifty-three line-of-duty deaths in state, in the United States. The average age is thirty-nine, and the average length of service is eleven years and seven months. They, Peace Officers Memorial honors federal, state, and local officers killed or disabled in line of duty. And just a couple of interesting facts. Carol County has had three line-of-duty deaths in, in the inception of the county, that we know, that I know of, and that was, the first one was Louis Webb, and he was, of course, killed by gunfire during the Allen tragedy in nineteen twelve. Deputy Sheriff Emory Grant Maybury, which was killed on April twenty-second, nineteen seventy-four, by gunfire at a traffic stop, and then Deputy Sheriff Curtis Allen Bartlett, who died on March ninth, two thousand seventeen, in a vehicle pursuit. Just think we need to remember that, and I really wish the sheriff had been here tonight. I know they went to, went to Washington to a memorial for the initial candlelight vigil and memorial for this week, and they have a thankless job. They don't get paid near what they deserve to be paid, to tolerate what they tolerate, and to deal with what they deal with. And we just need to be appreciative of what they do, and be mindful of it when you see them out on the street. Does anyone have anything else? Thank you, girl. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So move.
I need a second.
A second?
A second, and we'll start the voting with you, Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. This meeting is adjourned.
I've never been to this so rudely. I couldn't believe it. The snoring, sneering going on over there.